Okay, I'd like to call a word to the public hearing, August 23rd, 2021. The time is 6:45 PM. Purpose of the hearing is to receive public input on the reclassification of zoning to 250 parcels in the city of North Canton, in order to ensure that the current zoning more accurately reflects the current uses as proposed by ordinance 47-21. So...
Roll call.
Ben, would you please call a roll?
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Fonte?
Here.
Member Saretta?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Foltz?
Here.
Member Shroya?
Here.
And Member Warren?
Motion to excuse Member Warren. Show move. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. All right, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Ben Young. He's going to go section by section. But let the record reflect, Member Warren just joined us. If you have, if you live in the section that he puts up on the screen and you have any questions or concerns, we'll address them at that point. I'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and then we'll go from there. So, Ben?
So, yes, as you stated, we're here for 215 parcels spread throughout the city. These are sort of zoning cleanups of things we identified on the map that don't quite match what they're actually being used for. This originally came to us from Planning Commission, and we have a number of proposed amendments for you to consider tonight. If we make those amendments, we will need to send it back to Planning Commission.
And Ben, before we go, just one item was brought up to me prior to meeting. Any of the zoning changes, will this affect in any way property tax plus or minus?
We do not anticipate any of these changes affecting property taxes or values for anybody affected.
Okay.
So, Section A, this is various properties along Beechwood Avenue. The recommended change from Marty and I for this is instead of changing the front half of these properties to be RMF-B, change the back half to be RMFA, because all of the surrounding properties are already RMFA. Anybody is here from these properties and wishes to address council?
Hey, Ben, could you say what RMF stands for?
RMF is residential multifamily. A has a slightly higher density than B. This proposed change is supported by a letter from some of the property owners who all currently have an apartment building on the property that has 24 units and would be nonconforming if we changed it to B.
Any questions to this section? Okay, moving on.
Section B, we have no recommended changes. This is a part of a parcel that is zoned differently than the rest of the parcel, presumably.
Are there homes on this piece here?
There's multifamily housing, there's apartment building further south, so you can see the structure there on your screen, there's the parking garages.
Yeah. Ben, can you tell us, give us a screen?
This is located on School Street Northeast.
Just so everybody knows a little... So, these are all the apartments that the property owner is part of, northward?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody live in those apartments? All right, moving on.
Section C, this is a single-family home at 605 Lois Avenue Northwest. Three parcel numbers were inadvertently excluded from the text of the ordinance you have there on screen. We'd like to add them. And then in my last phone call with the property owner, he did request to be changed to residential multifamily B instead of residential single-family large lot, R70.
So, why was that? What was the reason behind it?
We, the notification letter we had sent him accidentally said that he was going to be zoned residential multifamily A. He did research on what those districts would allow him to do with his property, and he called me back and said he'd rather be RMFB. I informed him of the mistake that had been made. He said he'd still like to be RMFB.
Okay, that's a lower density or higher density? B.
B is a slightly lower-density multifamily housing. B permits 12 units per acre, so half as many as A.
I have a question. We have some, Mr. Kitter's here. Does that affect you in any way?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, you're not here, okay, just so you all know you can wait. Turn thing. All right. Okay, moving on.
Sections D and...
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm the gentleman at phone 605 Lois.
Yeah, please.
Mike, preserve.
Yes.
And Ben, you're confused as you were on the phone. I requested A when you sent B because it was a higher density if I was going to make a change to my present zoning.
My mistake.
We invested, when we bought that parcel, with opportunity for the future. Now you want to try to take away that opportunity of our zoning, which right now, to my east is the chapel, PNI. To my north, there is multifamily. To my west, there's office, general office, and to my south, there's general business. When I mentioned to Ben, I would consider, after receiving the letter, and then he said that there was a mistake made, that's when I got a little excited about positioning of my investment. We built there to raise our family here, which we did. Where I go in the future, I don't know, but multifamily is considerable at this point. I may want to be general business to my south, which would incorporate the red area on the map. So, I wanted to voice my opinion as a resident of North Canton City.
And Mike, I thank you. And I guess you basically verbalized what I was thinking, is these changes, when the folks decide to move on as they get, you know, later in life or whatever, or they just want to move on and sell it as an investment property, how that would affect you, and that would affect you in the pocketbook?
Correct. Very much. That was my biggest concern about any change to our zoning. As a team player, of course, we want to see North Canton thrive and grow.
Right.
And as my financial investment, I want to make sure I protect it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'd like to pay my money to you, Ben.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Can you make note of that parcel as well?
Is that number 88? This one right here that's on the screen?
This is Section 8, so the 88 is the section, it's a map notation, it doesn't apply to...
This is his parcel right here that we're talking about, these three or four parcels?
So, he owns all five, correct, he owns all five of these parcels?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're currently zoned park and institutional. It's the tail end of the old Hoover rail system.
I was just going to add, you know, there may be some questions about why we're going through and doing this, and this is a, this is a great example, because if this property is currently zoned park and institutional, you would be denied an opportunity to develop that property without a zone change. And that zone change would obviously have to move through the Planning Commission, through council, and would take many, many, many weeks to accomplish it. So, this is the purpose behind this general cleanup, to make sure that we have got everything lined up for the appropriate uses. So, to your point, when a transfer occurs, the zoning is correct and it doesn't come up in a title search, it says, oh, hey, this is park and institutional, you can't build anything on it, except a park or a church.
Generally speaking, it works, but from a density standpoint, A or B, that's...
Yeah, so that's why, again, that's why we're going from PNI here to this, and we're going through the exercises, is to make sure that these uses align properly.
Okay.
Okay, and this is going to be B, correct?
A.
A, okay. All right, A.
Sections D and E, these are on opposite sides of Whittier Avenue, and as you can see, they're portions of the church's parking lot that are currently zoned R50. Is anybody here from the church?
Tim?
I have a description. I live at 1311 Portage, Tim Kitter.
Tim, thanks. In your microphone, if you can talk into your microphone.
Is that better?
You have to say your name?
This is Tim Kitter. I live at 1311 Portage Street. My family owns the property from Portage back to the chapel, and in looking at what I got online, where you have red highlighted, is that correct, what the zoning change is?
Yeah.
I believe that is the part of our woods, that is not parking lot of the chapel.
So, we, the red highlight is on whatever the county auditor's website shows as the parcel boundary, so the actual zoning would be wherever the property line is.
Okay, well, Exhibit D is incorrect, though, because that's part of my woods.
Yeah, so you're saying, the bottom strip here, you're saying is part of the woods, and then the property line is right next to the parking lot?
Are you talking right here, Tim?
Yes.
So, I can't read what it says, so that looks like there's woods, but...
That's all woods, and it's our property, and it...
So, you're saying there's no parking lot, no parking lot there at all?
No, it's all trees, and I certainly don't want the zoning changed, because if my kids, I may want to build a retirement home up there, and I don't want to have it changed.
There is parking lot in this picture.
I understand that, but the highlighted part is my property, and that's what I want to clear up.
A survey would take care of that, too, a real survey.
Yeah.
You're saying this is part of your property and this is your property?
Yeah, there's...
Above the line?
Correct.
A lot of times, the GIS, you know, they make boo-boos, and we use those as kind of like a gauge, but to get it 100% accurate, you probably want a stick-pin survey.
That would be helpful, it would let me rest assured, you know, because that is incorrect as it is now.
What is our point of reference?
County auditor.
Stark County auditor.
Is it state auditor, or...
Stark County.
Stark County?
I mean, they just totally revamped everything, so I'm finding a lot of little things that are not exactly perfect, you know, it's just, it's basically a gauge, it's not exactly accurate always.
Well, it needs to be accurate.
Here's...
Well, I agree, my point is that there is a parcel with this, with the listed parcel number in the text of the ordinance owned by the chapel. Wherever the actual property line is, that is where this zoning stops. So, whether or not this picture and the line provided by the auditor is 100% accurate, the zoning is based on the piece of land, not this picture.
That is correct. What you're, what you're going to be voting on, in Item D, is Outlot 238. So, the question for Mr. Kitter is, do you own Outlot 238?
I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure of the outlots.
That's what matters.
Marty, you could look on the auditor's site.
I got it, Dominic, and it's owned by Jane Kitter.
Yes, that's my mom.
238, that's wrong.
That one on the left there, the big red rectangle on the left?
Yeah.
Not those two, the other one.
On the right, then.
That one, or that big one, that's owned by Jane Kitter.
Kitter?
Yes.
So, that's a typo? No, that's...
It's wrong.
Yeah, that's wrong.
It's wrong.
So, it looks like the church owns it, correct?
No.
No, he owns it.
No, 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 I'm saying is that the, it looks like there's a parking lot on it by the picture.
Okay.
So, that's all I'm saying, and the church would have the parking lot on it, but in fact, it's woods, right?
Correct.
Yeah, there is, there is woods at the end of the parking lot that's on church property, and then there's, looks like maybe probably a five-foot buffer.
We need to put a hold on Item D? We need to put a hold on Item D to figure out what the...
Any conditions at 10 is...
Yeah, and we may need to have somebody...
But the other two little rectangles are owned by the chapel.
Over here.
The chapel, there are small part of the woods that the chapel, that is on the chapel's property, but that 1.19 acres is ours, so I just want to make, that's why I'm here, so we can clear these things up.
It's a good catch, you're here, thank you.
Under the property line, you have any comments on that?
No, how are we going to follow up on this with me?
Let's put a hold on D to straighten out.
Okay.
We got just...
You might have to go to that one.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks, Tim.
Okay.
1.19, that's actually what he said. He said that one.
Anybody else? This, this one here?
I don't own the property on the other side of Whittier, but when I went up and visually looked at it, it is the same thing. I think if you look, those two lots are not owned by the chapel. I think it's the same thing.
4914 to 4915.
Yeah, but I can't speak because I don't own that. So, you might want to look into that one also.
Put a hold on those two?
Look at it.
Okay.
Okay, Ben?
All right, this is Section F, along either side of Emerson. Again, this is former Hoover rail, currently zoned park and institutional. We'd like to zone single-family to match the neighborhood that it's in. The two parcels on the left side of your screen are listed as being owned by chapel in North Canton, and then the other three on the right side are all private owners.
Is anyone affected by this exhibit?
These ones are becoming R70 instead of R50. These are on either side of Werschler Avenue.
Is there anyone affected by this? Okay, Ben?
All right, I and H are also former rail, PNI to single-family. It's our recommendation that these be consolidated. These are all on the west side of Pierce Avenue.
Anyone affected on Pierce?
The last of the old Hoover railroads, these are three parcels on the east side of Pierce Avenue. I believe these are becoming R70, whereas the other side's becoming R50.
Did you say R70?
Yes. Again, we would ask to consolidate these into one amendment for simplicity.
Anyone have any comment that's affected in this one? Good, Jamie?
Section M is the back half of a business district. It is our recommendation that this section should be cut entirely, as it was in the Main Street zoning that you all adopted earlier this year. A function of us working on both projects at the same time, it got included.
That's two parcels?
It's one long parcel, and the back half has different zoning than the front half. Well, it did. Now it's all Main Street North, so...
But at one point, that one parcel had two zoning classes.
Yes.
Is the owner of that, is the owner of that property here tonight?
917 North Main Street.
So, that falls under the new jurisdiction of the five districts, right?
Yes, so that's why we're recommending cutting this from the ordinance.
Right, that makes sense. And so, that particular piece that's highlighted, the person that owns the house owns that lot behind it, correct? It's all one big piece, or is it two parcels? Looks like it might be two parcels.
It's one parcel.
It's one parcel.
That's why the zoning has to change.
I see.
One parcel.
Okay, Ben, moving on.
M, this is a house at the end of St. Luke's that they've purchased. We're recommending changing it to PNI.
St. Luke's owns one of those properties, right, or do they own both?
They own both of them.
They own both of them, okay. Okay, moving on.
Hoover High School, recommending changing it to park and institutional.
What is it zoned for?
It's currently zoned residential single-family large lot.
It is a large lot.
It is quite a large lot.
Better than that.
All right, so this is a prime example, so from a tax standpoint, by changing it, this doesn't affect their standing with the auditor at one point?
Shouldn't.
The only way it'd affect it is if they eliminated the school and wanted to build houses, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
P, these are the open spaces slash Stark Parks easements in the sanctuary. We have heard from the homeowners association, and they would rather that all of these parcels remain R50 instead of being changed to park and institutional, in which case we would just cut this amendment.
Want to speak, Ken? Oh, yes, sir, please.
My name is Rod Robinson. I'm the president of the Sanctuary Homeowners Association. These five parcels are what we refer to as common areas. One is the boulevard entrance, three are ponds, and one is a green area in front of a group of houses. There is no intention to develop these properties, we want to keep them common areas. We prefer they not become parks and institutions, first of all, they're impossible to build on, second of all, what we want to protect from is future council who determine, and since they're zoned park, they should be open to the public for use. So, we would like them to stay as they are, not have them changed to park and institution to protect the property values of our homes.
Does that affect Stark Parks at all?
We own it, they don't.
Okay, so, but you allow full access for the public?
We have a, we do have a Stark Park access.
Right, that would not change?
No, that would not change.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, we're asking it be removed from your agenda.
Got you.
Section Q is land that we own next to the Hoover Recreation Complex, currently is wooded with a Stark Parks Trail on it. We're proposing changing it to park and institutional, it's currently residential single-family large lot. R is a small sliver of the back of Washington Square, so as you can see from the blue lines, it crosses several parcels. It is, for some reason, zoned park and institutional instead of general business A, like the rest of Washington Square. I have spoken to Mr. Dehoff on the phone, and he is in support of this fix.
All right, hold that thought. Is there anybody here from Washington Square Homeowners Association? This is the area that they proposed at one point, building a gas station.
Are you sure?
Yeah, so, it's on, what is it zoned, TNI right now?
It's PNI, and a larger issue is that it's not a whole parcel, so it's part of a parcel, and generally, our policy is whole parcels are zoned the same, so...
You know, make a, make a note with that one.
Can you point, can you point the area you're talking to? You don't have to point.
Great, that area right there.
That little strip?
Yeah, that is actually, they use it for, it is, it is, a portion of it is.
How much land is that?
Put a note on that, I need to, I need to call the homeowners association.
It's just north of the parking lot, correct?
How would they...
If you go out, you can find a 91 restaurant, there's a retention.
Yes.
Isn't the trail running through there?
The trail is sort of north.
The trail runs here, up here.
So, the, the...
This is the trail.
The trail is right here, and then it goes into the neighborhood and then back up here.
A portion of that, because they initially, that was 15 years ago, they wanted to play one of those little self-serve get-go's, it wouldn't take up much space. Yeah, I, no, put a note on that one, we'll, we'll come back to that.
I'm not sure if that's a separate parcel.
Ben, can you tell how much land that is? Is that like an acre? Okay, that's okay, we can look at it later.
I don't think it's a separate parcel.
It is not a separate parcel.
So, it's, so, but somehow, it used to be a separate parcel. So, what you're saying, that's why it's zoned differently?
Um...
Or when they developed this, this just was an oversight on the city's part?
Lots of the zoning ordinances are written as legal descriptions, so I suspect it was a oversight of wording of, you know, then 500 feet this way, then 300 feet, and they just missed the parcel boundaries, or parcel boundaries changed since we last zoned this ordinance, and we didn't catch up.
Well, a lot of this is Hoover Park, so this is probably why.
Well, that is the stormwater detention basin that's required for the development.
A portion of this.
Cannot be filled and redeveloped.
Not all of them. Let's make sure we check on that.
Well, if it's built new, they'd have to create another detention.
That's correct.
There's no way they could do that.
But if you zoned that, you could include that with a portion of the parking lot in total land to put something there. That's what we want to avoid. That's not going to happen.
I'd zone it PNI.
Okay, yeah, make a note on that one.
You're going to hold this?
Yeah. Moving on.
Section S is the church that I forget the name of, on, at the corner of Marquardt and Maple.
Baptist church.
Baptist church, and we're proposing changing it to PNI.
Trinity Baptist.
Church of Christ.
Which side of Marquardt are you?
This is the corner of Marquardt and East Maple, so the north side of East Maple and the east side of Marquardt.
It's not the Baptist church.
Yeah, that's Church of Christ.
The Baptist would be on the left side? Yes. It's on the west side.
And we're just deducting that property to church property?
This is Church of Christ.
Yes, so there's four single-family homes along Marquardt in front of it.
That will not be affected?
No.
Correct, it's just the church's property.
Okay, moving on.
Okay.
T, similar to the other issue at Washington Square, there's a little chunk of this parcel that is zoned differently than the rest of the parcel. The rest of the parcel is office building, and then this little chunk is currently general business A.
This is just behind the bank?
Yes, it's behind the bank, it's the rest of the parking lot of the sort of medical offices back there.
And it's zoned what now, general business what?
That strip is currently general business A, the rest of the parcel is office building, so we'd be matching it to the rest of the parcel.
Change it then? Do it.
This is right next to the parcel we had talked about in R.
Yes.
Split by the trail.
Correct.
I'm going by the pictures.
Make a note on 912, Ben. Make a note on 912 that for me. We're talking T here?
Yes, this is T.
Okay, moving on.
U, this is, Stark Parks owns this property up along the back of the Altman Brothers property on Market Street, so we're proposing changing this to Parks and Institutional.
Change it to P and I?
To P and I, yes.
And that's where the trail is now, right?
Yes, correct, that is the trail.
Okay.
V, this is actually part of our right-of-way, that we are proposing D-zoning.
Okay, moving on.
W, this is part of the Altman Brothers property. So, you'll see on V, there are two zonings on that one parcel, so we change the back half of the parcel to match the rest of the parcel. There are two typographical errors in the text on this one. The parcel number should be the one seen on screen, and the outlot number should be 286.
So, we want to change this to what?
Office building.
What is the, when that is eventually developed, what, Marty, what would be the setback? Those parcels 405, 6405, 6745? We'd be setting back not from their property, we'd be setting back from the trail, correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
We've already got 20, 30 feet. What's the setback found at that point? I'm sorry. I wasn't in my microphone either. I apologize.
Okay, for the office building, when the front yard abuts any other street than Main Street, it would be 20 feet. That would be essentially the front setback. The side setbacks would also be 20 feet, except in the event of, well, that's for, excuse me, that's for multifamilies, 20 feet. Any other use on the side would be 5 feet. And the rear yard would be 20 feet for multifamily and 5 feet for everything else.
And Ben, you kept saying Altman Brothers, but I think you mean the Altman Health Foundation.
Yes, sorry.
Now, Marty, if, if I might ask, so, let's say that this parcel number 10010198 were to be sold. That parcel consists of the brownish color that abuts market, and then the yellow along the backside that's encased in a red kind of trapezoid thing. That's all one parcel. So, we have one parcel owned by the Altman Health Foundation that you're telling me has two different zonings on it. So, which, which zoning governs in the event of a sale?
Technically, they both would. Essentially, the, if they were to develop this parcel and the building encroached over the zoning line, that building would have to conform to the zoning in which the building rested. In looking at this parcel, it doesn't appear to be large enough to create any worthwhile development, which was the reason for this, this change. And in regards to the setbacks, looking at the current setbacks and the proposed setbacks, there would be no change for the setbacks. They are the same in either one of the zoning.
Yeah, whether zoning is the same, so it's not gonna affect the setback.
Yeah.
Let me answer that question. Okay. You got a question with council on that one? Alright, Ben, moving on.
Section X, we did not get to the point of making an exhibit, because before I did, the owners called and pointed out that they are a single-family home and should not be turned into a park, and I concur and recommend that we cut this. I don't know if they're here tonight. This is 1605 East Maple Street.
1605 East Maple? No. Alright, moving on.
Section Y, we also don't have an exhibit. This is several various condo associations throughout the city. The letters that went out said that they currently had no zoning. That was a miscommunication between myself and engineering. They all have various different, currently non-conforming zonings, and we're proposing to change them all into residential multifamily A.
I got a question. So, with the multifamily zoning, this is the only thing, I'm just trying to think through the real estate mindset, is if the zoning changes, and let's say someone were to buy or sell that piece of real estate in that jurisdiction, so for example, you have condo associations, where the condo association owns all the land, right, and there's common space, and then there's the PUD, which is the Planned Urban Housing Units, where you have like, say Fredericksburg, you know what I mean, over there, behind Eric's grocery ba, grocery bag? So, you'd pay a fee, and they would take care of snowgrass landscaping, but let's say if that gets changed to a different kind of classification, and someone's not paying cash for it, and you have to get financing, clear title, sometimes that will impact. So, we should probably double-check to make sure that the multifamily classification won't interfere with financing based on Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, Jenny Mae. Do you know what I'm saying? You understand what I'm saying, Martin? So, like, if, if you change the zoning, and let's say you're trying to get financing to sell your property, because not everybody has cash. The secondary market may not accept that if it's not classified correctly for what it is, like a PUD or a condo, hypothetically. That's really what I'm talking about specifically. So, that would be something I probably could call a lender real quick and figure it out, just as a sidebar.
How is it zoned presently on Fredericksburg?
Fredericksburg is currently R-50. This isn't just the Fredericksburg condos, so it's a Cambridge Avenue condos, Shearbrook condos, Lois Avenue, Shalimar, Durkin, Hole. They all got grouped together into one amendment.
My hunch would be, just from understanding real estate and how financing and things work, I probably would just get clarity on that before we, you know, pull the trigger on it. This gentleman has something to say.
Ah, yeah. I'm the president of that association, and I had conducted a survey amongst the people. Pardon me?
Say your name.
Oh, Dave Schneider. And we had all requested Mr. Young there to maintain his current zoning for some of the reasons that you mentioned, and also that all those units since they've been built were residential units, and there would be no change involved as far as we were concerned. And we would like to keep it that way. I had supplied him with a letter with all the signatures of our ownership there, and so we are requesting to leave that as it is.
What subdivision did you say you lived in?
The Fredericksburg Commons.
Okay, so, you pay a fee, and they take care of snowgrass, windows, whatever, right? So, you have common space, but you don't own the land under it, do you? It's, it's common with the condo?
With the association, yes.
Right, so, but you guys are different in a way than a condo, because you actually own the building, so you have to fix everything that goes wrong with the building. Unlike a condo, which the exterior would be covered by the fee, where this is not the case. That's why this is unique, because Fredericksburg's a total different animal than a lot of the condominiums.
It is, yes.
So, I would just say, like, a lot of the people that live there pay cash, but let's just assume 30% pay cash, 70% have financing, so potentially, that could be a little interruption with getting traditional financing. That would be just my opinion, based on understanding real estate.
Well, and the financing, as you stated, could be a problem for someone wishing to purchase a property there, because they look at that, as you well know, from residential to commercial, would be a, a big step, and especially if it would be a one unit out of a 10-unit complex, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Sleeping dog.
Yeah.
Don't kick it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Donna Solomon, and I live at the Cambridge on the Creek condo, right off of Salway, Everheart. In fact, several of the people I live in my area, I'm a little confused about this, how this would affect our association. You know, we have a condo, we have like four, you know, homeowners association. I'm responsible for the inside, they're outside, and so my neighbor, we're like, what the heck's he talking about this? You know, I'm a little confused. So, I want to make sure that we're gonna agree to something that is correct for us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, I'm not into zoning, but I'm smart enough, I could probably pick up on it, but I need a little more explanation, please.
What exhibit is this, Ben? Have we got to this yet?
We're on this. I don't have an exhibit, because they're spread throughout the city, but grouped together.
So, we probably should just pause on the condo thing while we figure this out real quick. What you're talking about is you have a condo, so yours is different, where you pay a fee, and the exterior, except for windows, are covered, let's say. Where Fredericksburg is different. That's a different animal, where they just have maintenance, kind of like Washington Square. You know, so, I, I'm just thinking, you know, we'll just have to get some clarity on that, is my opinion.
So, we're gonna move on that later on?
I, I think we probably just have to get a little more clarity on it, to make sure we understand.
Yeah, thank you.
No action option.
Yeah, yeah, we will pause on the condo associations for now. Gather more information, alright. Thank you. Alright, moving on.
Section Z, this is, oh, I just had it. 343 Whitworth Street Northeast. As you can see, the surrounding properties all have a mixed-use overlay. This one does not. We are proposing adding the mixed-use overlay.
Why do they have a mixed-use overlay?
This is right behind the Hoover District.
These are all owned by the IRG. These are the homes they bought, and we did make some changes to that, and I do believe that the, when we made those changes the last time, we, it was supposed to be marked off, but when the maps were done, it didn't get marked off.
It did not, okay.
AA, these are the schools, sports fields, and gravel parking lot.
May I interrupt?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't see you up there, Karen.
That's okay.
Your name?
My name is Karen Benfield, and I was watching you on YouTube. I did look this over later, early this afternoon, and, thank you, and I kept the speed limit and came over here, because I know you're past it, but I'm gonna talk about Exhibit F and G. And F is Outlot 4934 and 4935. And I learned something here that...
Yeah, hold on one second, Karen.
Okay.
We're gonna go back to that. Alright, there you go.
There it is. Okay, so 4934 and 4935, when I've looked at the Stark County Auditor records, that's part of the parcel of the North Canton Chapel. Okay, so that is P and I. And did I understand correctly, you wanted to change it to R-50? In addition to that, I used to locate utility lines, and there's a gas line that runs through there, all the way to Youngstown, and since I was enlightened by Mr. Young's information, that's the old Hoover rail line, because I'm pretty sure on the other side of the street, there is gas line running through there, so that might be something to check into in that particular area. I live at the end of the street. That's why I'm so familiar with it. Also, on 4935, there is a storm drain there, because that's part of their drainage system coming off of the church parking lot, so it may not be the best area to do R-50, especially since I know one of the homeowners has two sump pumps in his basement.
4934, 4935.
And you just may want to check those parcels, you know, on the east side of the street, too, that, you know, gas line and the utilities going through them. Part of the reason why, probably why they're not built on. One of the homeowners just had a notice from Dominion, they were checking their lines there. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for letting me take your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah. Anyway, as I was saying, the school district's sports fields and gravel parking lot, we're proposing changing it to Park and Institutional. BB, the next four are parts of Dogwood Park, again, becoming Park and Institutional. CC, this is the lot we have recently signed a lease for with the masons to incorporate into Dogwood Park, again, Park and Institutional.
Is that where that parking lot's gonna go, with the trail leading over to the Dogwood Park?
Yeah. And Pavilion.
DD, these are one whole parcel, and then two bits of other parcels that are currently zoned residential two-family on the north side of Portage, and we want to match the rest of the neighborhood and make them residential, single-family. EE and FF, we'd like to consolidate these into one amendment, propose making them both GBA, and then incorporate as well Parcel 92300062, which is this building with white text on top of it, that's that little tire store that was recently annexed on the other side of Y's. It's currently zoned industrial.
Does anyone here live at any of these parcels?
GG, this is a small sliver of people's backyards next to Price Park.
Those are going to P and I?
Those are going to residential multifamily B. HH and NN are the two wings of Whitworth Park around Hillcrest, becoming P and I. II is part of somebody's yard that is, for some reason, P and I even when the rest of the park is residential, single-family. This is becoming residential. JJ and LL are three parcels that are part of the Price Park Trail, becoming Park and Institutional. KK, no exhibit. Again, the owners called me before I got to the point of making an exhibit and pointed out that they should not be a park. So, I recommend cutting what was KK. MM, no changes. All of these various amendments are this large tract of land here that has the new hospital on it. They have various disparate zonings, and they're all proposed to become general business A. This is a drainage parcel that we own, becoming Park and Institutional, on the back of Linwood. This is a small corner of Arrowhead, becoming Parson Institutional.
XX.
This is the homes recently purchased by St. Paul's, and we would recommend adding the three parcels recently created by us vacating the alleys next to St. Paul.
What would that zoning be for St. Paul's?
St. Paul's is here.
Paul, did you have any questions?
Paul, you want to come up?
Can you come on up here, Paul? Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Paul Beinlick, I'm representing St. Paul's Church Properties that we own. I'm having a little hard time hearing you back there. I mean, the acoustics don't seem to be real good. Can you hear me all right?
Very well.
Okay. Yeah, we just want to make sure we understand exactly what the plan is here. What is the city trying to accomplish with Park and Institutional?
Park and Institutional is the zoning code we generally use for churches, government buildings, schools, parks, community institutions.
I guess the question is, what are your intentions with that property? Would that hamstring you in the future?
Okay, maybe we're not talking the same parcels here. I'm looking at some different parcels. So what are you specifically referring to? Help me out.
Those three parcels, four parcels?
On coal?
Church and coal.
Yes, on coal.
Yeah, well, at the present time, both of our priests are housed in two of those parcels, and we rent out the other two. So we own all four parcels.
So from a rental standpoint, would they be out of code if we changed this? Can you rent a parcel in P and I?
The rental part of it would fall outside of the P and I.
Okay. That's going to be a problem.
How about Long Main Street Business? Does that fall into the Business District?
It's far enough off.
Is it too far off?
Too far off.
Okay. So maybe we should just leave that one be.
Yeah, I think so.
So, so what are you saying?
What is it now?
What is it, R-7?
R-7.
Right now, it's R-50.
R-50.
Yeah.
If you're housing your priests and you're also renting the other two out, if we changed it to P and I, those two rentals would fall outside the zoning, so I guess my suggestion, which I think is where you're going here, is to leave it alone.
Correct.
Okay.
That would be correct unless, you know, somebody has some different options they could give us. We're trying to help people out there, so.
Right, I got you.
Just leave it.
Yeah.
We're just going to go fine, leave it.
No.
Okay.
Paul, just make sure you understand that if you want to redevelop it for a religious purpose, you'll need to comply with the zoning, and you'll be back before the planning commission in this body to request that change.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's not a big deal, but it's just...
Okay.
Just procedural step.
All right.
Thank you, Paul.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ben, moving on.
ZZ is Charlestown Memorial Park, becoming Park Institutional. AAA is East Woods Park, becoming Parson Institutional. BBB is a small strip of land next to the church that is currently residential, single-family, just changing it to Park Institutional to match the rest of the church. I don't know if anybody's here. And then finally, CCC is our water tower that got rezoned by the Main Street zoning, so I recommend we cut this.
Say that last part again.
I recommend we cut this one, it was rezoned by the Main Street zoning.
Okay. Does council have any questions? Ben, Marty, Pat, anybody?
Let's, let's do this.
Yeah, hold on, I was going to go to some...
Go to them, and then I'll come back to you.
All right. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am, please. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything as we went through here, so please state your name and address.
My name is Suzanne Weaver. I live at 315 Portage Street. I don't know if I missed this one we were going through or not, but we are, we are, the letter I got says it was to be changed to single-family, which is fine, that's the way I thought it always would be, but my problem is, I am being practically forced to sell my home, and I have been there for 48 years, so they can tear it down and make a parking lot and a, and a ball field there. I don't understand that. The two houses on each side of my mine have been sold to the library, and I've been asked to sell, they want me to sell my home, which I've been there for 48 years, I've improved the property, I've improved the house. I just, I don't under, I don't under, it's a historical home, it was built in 1880, and they want to tear it down for a baseball field. I have a real problem with that.
So you're not affected by the zoning change? Which parcel are you?
I'm the second house down from the kindergarten on the same side of the street.
This one here, so the back roughly third of her property is currently zoned differently.
What's it currently zoned?
The back third is currently zoned residential two-family, and the front two-thirds are currently zoned single-family.
So what was your, what was your proposal, then?
Make the whole thing single-family.
Single, that shouldn't hurt you at all.
That should help, all right.
You know, that, being single-family's okay. If someone wants to buy it, if you're not comfortable selling it, I wouldn't sell it, right? Unless they give you like millions of dollars, then you can go buy a new place.
Well, I've had pressure put on me to sell the property, which I do not want to do, and if they're going to make a, I was told that both of the schools were going to be torn down, and then basically the three houses that are there, which includes mine, will be torn down, and the front half will be parking for the library, and the rest of it will be made into a, a ball field. And, and if it's zoned residential, that, making a ball field is not residential.
Right.
So I don't, I don't understand how they could do that without changing the zoning of the properties.
Yeah, the whole property. I would say in your position, you're better off being zoned single-family.
Yes.
And that's what this will do.
That is correct, yes. That, I just...
We changed that earlier this year to show this, reflect this terms on you that we want to move forward with. So that helps you. What you do with the church or the school, that's up to you.
Yeah.
You know, that's a, that's a private matter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns regarding this zoning change? Daryl, your comments?
Let's, let's look at the list. You have it in your packets. This is the draft ordinance. Let's walk through and make sure that we understand what's going to proceed, what's going to be held, and what will be deleted. Bill Sett, Mr. Young? Items A through C are okay. D is a whole, E is a...
C, C, the property owner would rather be our residential multifamily A.
Okay.
C and D.
C and D, okay.
C, D, and E, are we holding?
So we're going to hold those?
Yes, yep.
Okay, you're going to hold F?
That was the gas line.
That's because it's not...
Gas line, maybe?
That was Karen.
Yes.
Karen was talking about.
You're going to, you're going to, G is okay, H and I are okay, J, K, L are okay, M will be deleted, N is okay, O is okay, P will be deleted. Q is okay, R is on hold, S is okay, T is on hold, U, V, W, okay, X deleted, Y will be held, Z, double A, double B, double C, okay.
Those were the condo ones, Fredericksburg?
Fredericksburg is Y, that's on hold.
Okay, Y. Oh, that's right, because they're all over town, so you grouped them in a, okay, got it.
So Z, double A, double B, double C are okay. Double D through double J are okay. Double K is deleted. Double L through double P are okay. Double Q through double U are okay. Double V through double X are okay. Double Y is hold.
That was the one they didn't want to change the zoning, correct, from multi? That was Paul Beinlick?
Yes, that's the church. Double Z is okay, AAA is okay, BBB is okay, and CCC is a delete. Is that square with what everybody has?
That's what I got. Very good.
That was efficient.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, got that. Is there anybody else, last chance, wishing to talk about the zoning change? If you want to talk on the microphone, you can call, you can get one of us after the meeting.
Okay.
The only question is, what do you want to do on the hold, when do you want to proceed with, do you want to bring this back, pick up the holds?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're going to have to discuss the hold items.
So this hasn't left committee yet, so it will be back on committee on the 13th in a new draft with all of these changes.
Hey, Ben, regarding the condo or PUD situations, do I need to do any research on that with lending or secondary market, or, you know what I mean, I can do my own checking as well, so that we could try to come to an understanding, you know, because honestly, there'll be people getting financing, not cash, everybody. Okay, I'll look into that.
Patrick, you want me to look into it? Okay. All right, so if we're good, entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is adjourned. We're going to move into the regular council meeting. If you guys want to stick around, you can.
It's exciting.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, we'll give you a minute.
I'm going to take a two-minute recess.
Yes, sir.
Susan's on the chair, Mark Beinlick is on the table. She's the speaker. We're not... Susan wants to... We're not choosing myself. She's the speaker. 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 We're not choosing myself. She's the speaker.
Ready?
We are ready.
That was a pretty quick 15-minute, uh-
Yeah. Good job.
That's for all the children not updated.
Yeah. Right.
There were a lot of them. That's all those years of not keeping updated.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call to order the North Canton regular council meeting, August 23rd, 2021. The time is 7:53. Mark?
Would you like to leave some first?
Sure.
Laura, thank you for bringing us here this evening with our good minds and healthy bodies. Thank you for giving us the honor to represent our community with these certain matters. Help us to move forward in your will. Help us to listen, to understand, and help us to be out front in making sure that our community stays safe and healthy and running in a good position. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pleasure to be at the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ben, please call the roll.
Member Revolt?
Present.
Member Fonte?
Here.
Member Saretta?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Foltz?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
And Member Stroian?
Here.
Seven present.
All right, for your consideration, I need a motion and a second to approve as presented. Minutes from June 21, committee of the whole. Minutes from June 28, city council. Minutes from July 12, city council. Minutes from August 3, city, or special council. Minutes from August 4, special council. And minutes August 5, special council. And July 21, finance report.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstain on a couple of those that were not here.
Yeah.
We were, several of us were not here for a couple of those.
I'm gonna abstain as this, I'm gonna abstain as well. Who else were you missing?
Some of the special council meetings, right?
Yep.
No.
There was I. Yeah. So we've got members Saretta, Revolt, will abstain from the special council meetings.
For those three.
Yep, special council.
You were here.
I was here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you was here.
That's right. Okay, good. Okay, moving on. I need a motion and a second not to request a hearing on the issue of D4 permit to 721 North Main Street.
Who's the applicant?
Ben?
Uh, the Elks. I believe. Maslin, North Canton, Elks Lodge 2029.
Elks Lodge.
Elks Lodge?
Isn't that right up the street from 7th Street there, just north a bit, on the west side?
All right.
It's a new place.
Correct. Do we have an, uh, 721? Did they purchase that property? Ben, do you know?
I do not, I mean, I presume as they are listed as the property owner by the Board of Liquor Control, they will still have to pass a vote of the electorate for this to be issued.
Is that the, is that the old, um, hair salon?
It's Trino. I'm thinking of.
It used to be a hair salon.
Yeah, it's that little white building, hair salon.
LeBeau's used to own it, was a hair salon.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. And it will still have to go to the vote for, at the precinct.
Yes, so we are just being given the option to request a hearing.
A move that we not request a hearing?
Second.
Waive the hearing.
Yeah, waive the hearing. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Stroian, seconds.
Stroian, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Please review.
Brad? Okay. All right, at this time, we have a special presentation, results of the 21 biannual North Canton Community Survey conducted by the office of city council. Ben?
I am very glad I cut this down. So as you all know, we conducted our biannual survey this year from May 15th to August 14th. We got the second highest response rate ever, driven largely by online responses, which saw a very large rise. This gave us a 2% margin of error for anything you're about to see tonight, and 89% of them were homeowners. So demographics, as usual, we had a nice spread from all of the wards, fairly even. Also, as usual, we had a oversampling of individuals age 55 and over. To put what oversampling means in context for you, these two green lines are our population measured by the census. These blue lines are our traditional response pools. The red line is the responses from this year. As you can see, the higher end of the age spectrum has higher responses. What is interesting is that if we only looked at the online responses, we would have a slightly more representative demographic sample.
Cool graphic, thanks.
City overview, general questions that we asked about the city. Quality of life change. So question six asked respondents how they felt the quality of life was changing in North Canton. 45% said it was staying the same, 40 said it's getting better. It's about an 85% majority saying that it's either better or the same. Question seven, to follow that up, then asked, are you happy with whatever direction you just identified in question six? And 60% said they are happy, indicating that probably the 40% who think it's getting better and 20% of people who think it's staying the same are happy about it. 17% of people said they were displeased with the direction the city is going overall. Good value for taxes. Question eight, we saw an increase of 2% this year. That was largely taken from the no opinion category. What I think is kind of the penultimate question, do you plan to stay for the next five years? Overall, yes. We did see a decline though, and that was offset by a rise in maybe responses, but thankfully, no, did not go up. This was largely driven by the fact that we reached more younger people this year. So as this next chart will show you, somewhere between 18 and 34, people are making the decision of whether or not they're gonna stay here in our community. If they make the decision to stay, they're probably staying. You'll see it plateaus off at, you know, high 70s, 80s. So this sort of demographic, 34 and younger, is kind of the key where we need to be focusing on, are we gonna keep people, or are they gonna leave our community? For the sake of brevity tonight, we're just gonna look at the citywide composite rating. So we traditionally ask a series of 14 rating scales on various city services. A full PowerPoint will be available tomorrow morning on the council's webpage for anybody watching who wants to see all of the ratings individually, but this is the composite score for the whole city. We did go down a little this year. We were expecting a slight decline cuz we eliminated the excellent option. So excellent and good were combined into one rating option, which more than likely pushed some people to answer fair, who would have otherwise said good. We think this is a more accurate picture though, having eliminated that excellent option. Thankfully, poor responses did not noticeably increase. Public information. Do we communicate effectively? We had a strong 10% increase from 2019. It is my best guess that this reflects efforts that have been made by council's office and the administration to improve the website, improve social media usage, improve live streaming, things like that. It is still unfortunately below 50%, but we are climbing steadily, and we can only keep getting better. Our website usage, we changed this question as well this year. Traditionally, you have only been able to say yes or no. This year, we added a I have not used the website option because lots of people wrote in the margins, I have not used it on the previous surveys. So we think this is a much more accurate picture. And what this tells us is that about half of our population has used our website, and the vast majority of those who have used it find it helpful. What is less used from our website is the alert notifications, which send things about the city direct to your email or as a text message. But this year, we added the option of would you sign up if we made it easier? And we got a lar, a fairly large chunk of 22% who said yes. So that indicates to me that with some better marketing, we could probably boost how many people are using alerts. Preferred methods of communication, we changed this question as well this year. We let people rank the methods instead of just picking one, and what resulted was this lovely chart in front of you showing preference scores. This chart in particular, I think, really demonstrates the sort of technological divide between the generations. So as you can see, the older you get, the more likely you are to prefer a paper mail newsletter, and the younger you get, the more likely you are to prefer social media. What is very fascinating to me is that email and website scored exactly the same in every single age category, which implies that they're sort of interchangeable to people. So whether it's just available on the internet or comes to their inbox, they don't really mind one way or the other. Overall, what this indicates is that, at least for now, to have the most effective communication possible, the city needs to pull from all sides, so digital and paper communications to reach the most number of people. That is kind of further reinforced by the next question where we ask people, how do you currently get information about our community?
Newspaper.
So the newspaper was the number one answer at 22.1%. Overall, 27.7% of our community primarily gets information from news media. 27.4% gets it from their peers, either through word of mouth or social media. Only 20.4% get it directly from us. So about a fifth of the city get information directly from us. And the most surprising statistic to me from this data was that 43.2% of our population relies on information showing up in their mailbox, whether it's the newspaper, a newsletter, our town, in the utility bill. That's their primary method, which kind of indicates that they don't go looking for it, but if it comes to them, they will read it. This year, we asked a specific question about the Canton repository and how many people read it. So sort of interesting, you saw the primary method of communication, people said the newspaper. Yet, more than half of our population said that they don't currently have a subscription to the Canton repository, our most common newspaper.
Hey, Ben, I got a question. So a lot of times, people are online with the repository versus a paper hard copy, so they may not distinguish the difference when that question was asked.
Well, we asked them, do you have an online subscription? Do you have a paper subscription? Do you have both, or do you have none?
10% online only.
So this is where, this question in particular is where the oversampling of older populations really comes into play. So when we looked at this on an age spread and then applied that to our actual demographic percentages, only about 25% of our population subscribes to the Canton repository. And four fifths of that 25% are over the age of 65.
Oh, my.
I think 25's high.
Can you, can you repeat, repeat that again? I, I'm trying to let it settle in. Say it again.
So we asked this question because the city spends a fair amount of money on required advertisements in the Canton repository. And according to the information gathered from the survey, about 25% of our population applied out to a more reasonable age demographic, has a subscription, a paper subscription to Canton repository where they would receive our legal advertisements. And then of that 25%, four fifths are over the age of 65.
But they, they all read the legal section, right?
You know, we spend a significant amount of money, and we're required by the General Assembly, are they looking at stuff like this?
Well, so, we, in response to this, you'll be seeing some legislation later this year to remove some of those publishing requirements from our local ordinances. Our biggest expense is publishing the ordinances you all pass, and to eliminate that would require a charter amendment.
It's looked like bring back the newsletter, huh?
Well, I think it makes another interesting observation, is we're required to advertise job openings in a, in a newspaper in which, you know, 80% of the population of the city is over eight, that are reading the newspaper are over age 65 that wouldn't be eligible for, for the position anyway. So it does make it very challenging to us.
When the people you're recruiting, which may be even high school kids, college graduates, that's not where they're going.
That's not where they're going.
Yeah, so that's one of the requirements that will be coming to you later this year for elimination.
Hey, I got an observation. What's surprising to me is we have this killer website that has these electronic notifications. I get them all the time. They're text notifications, you know, or you can get email. I mean, and you know exactly what's going on in the city. I'm shocked that more people don't know that, so that means that we're not getting it out enough and letting people know how simple and easy it is. And don't add, no, it's not the case. It's called they don't really know. Because I don't know how to set it up, but it's magically set up, so I'm not sure how that happened. So thank you, administration.
Get that notification on the paper water bill so they could get it.
Could, yes.
Well, they're still looking at that. It's on there. It's on there.
Our last section here, we asked a couple of questions on specific policy priorities that you all in administration identified as wanting answers about this year. First up was what people would like to see in the parks. The top answer was nothing, and 80% of people who said nothing were over the age of 65. So these are the next six responses. 30% of people said walking paths. 24.5% splash pads, gardens, dog parks, benches, water features, the kind of things we find ourselves talking about a lot.
Yeah, this is a home run, really.
And when we look at them by age, they just kind of reinforce each other. So these are the top five choices for each age group. And what, altogether, what this tells us is that people are generally happy with sort of the amenities in the park. So they're happy with the playgrounds and the ball fields. What they want from us at this point is better connections for the parks, so walking paths, and then nice things to look at while walking on those walking paths. And then finally, you know, more, nobody will ever say no to more spaces to play with your kids and your pets.
Ben, go back there one more real quick. So age 45 to 54, the number four choice was amphitheater. I don't see it anywhere else on the list.
They were the only age group where it made it into the top five.
Age group that's coming to concerts.
Obviously, pets are important, walking paths are important, which we know this, and that's why everything got changed up.
Yeah, so splash pads tend to become more important.
These are parents, huh?
Yeah.
25, 44, parents who got children, you know, pets up. But walking paths are top two, one or two, very right field, 65.
Any other questions on parks before I move on? And then finally, the lovely comment section, which I know you all eagerly await. Comments are hard to decipher and congregate, but if you go to this URL, you can all look at the comments for yourselves right now. And as you can see on the screen within a screen in front of you, our software creates this Word Cloud, it calls it. And if you click on any word in the Word Cloud, so in our example here, I've clicked on parks, it will filter out all of the responses that talk about parks. So you can either go online and look at all of the comments, or you can pick out a word from the Word Cloud and look at just the ones who talk about that word. So I encourage you all to explore that to the best of your ability. You all had a draft of my final report in your packets. You all had a draft of my final report in your packets. That will likely be published by, a final version of that will probably be published by the end of this week, pending, you know, requests from you all to add more information. Daryl has already given me three today. Any final questions for me?
Well, I would like to comment. I'm just finding it hard to breathe over here, the oxygen's being sucked out of the room. Do you even understand what just happened here? The magnitude of the data analytics that have gone into this survey for the first time? I'm so grateful to the city council for, you know, entrusting this important process to the clerk. More than capable, turning this more into a policy research tool for the council compared to what it has been in its historic past is, you know, part of the, what even was that called we did? State of the city. I mean, it's a separate function, should be. This is very important to know as you all are making policy decisions, where we're going. And to have someone in the clerk's office that is able to put this together in the way that he did is just kudos to everybody, to the council for working on the questions. Garbage in, garbage out, right guys, gals?
That's right.
So you get to put the right questions together, and you got some important information, and look forward to, you know, Ben working on this, and maybe it's something that the council should consider more than every other year. Because it's a very informative piece of information that we get. I know, when I served on council in the past, I wasn't a big fan of the newsletter because we tended to ask questions that didn't give us any value to form, formulate policy. But I think you've really turned the corner, so congrats.
Pat, when I see that survey with that, the way it's spread it out like that, with the amenities and things people want, it's like what we already know, and we're changing everything to represent that. And I think a true testament was, last week, we had an unbelievable experience here in the city. And I was out with a lot of people during the day, and then in the evening, I'm talking about our festival, our Main Street Festival. That was huge. Home run out of the park. And I'll tell you, man, I had so many positive comments, and I know that may be come up at the end here, but that plays right along in the game plan of what the theme is of the city moving forward, even as us 60-plus-year-old people are trying to enjoy it.
Especially you.
Yeah, Ben, outstanding work.
Thank you very much.
That really was incredible.
Yeah, excellent. Go Daryl.
I think, based on what Dom said, that, Main Street Festival, we got momentum.
Yeah, you're not a kid.
Yeah.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think what you have, and I think Ben's done a terrific job, obviously. I think many of you know also that he is taking the lead on the assisting a better policy drill down on our master plan. You've all seen the little cards that he has. And again, to provide us with better information. I think what's particularly important and timely is the administration now is working through its budget. I think there are, in this particular document, some items that may give us some policy initiatives or some activities, for example, a dog park. You know, that's a conversation we could have. And, you know, if we get one or two really good ideas out of it, and we can get them into a budget, I think we've, we've acted on, on community input.
I agree.
So, Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any other comments from council?
Very informative. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was awesome.
Data will, data and reports and this PowerPoint will go up on council's webpage over the course of the week. For anybody who really wants to dive in right now, all of the data is already publicly available on this link on screen, which is the exact same link you went to to take the survey. So just go back to the same place, and you can see all the.
All right. All right, good stuff. All right, moving on, new business. I need, excuse me, I need a motion and a second to suspend Council Rule 24 and allow consideration of what will be ordinances 50-21, 51-21, 52-21, without a committee report.
Motion to suspend the rules for committee reports for the aforementioned ordinances.
Is there a second?
Story of seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance 50-21?
Revolt moves. Story of seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to execute the participation agreement for the One Ohio subdivision settlement with McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, and AmerisourceBergen Corporation pursuant to the One Ohio memorandum of understanding regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds and consistent with the material terms of the July 21, 2021 proposed national opioid distributor settlement agreement available at the link and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you. Chairwoman Ware.
Yeah, basically, it is what it says, and we were asked to be part of a class action lawsuit regarding opioids, and it is on emergency. And we had consensus, I believe, over a break to move forward. And Pat, if there's anything else you want to say?
Just the latest report that you may have seen in the newspaper is that 99.9% of all entities eligible to sign up for this have signed up for this.
Okay. No other questions, I move to adopt on emergency.
Revolt, seconds. That's for the first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Revolt moves.
Ware, in second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 50-21 under suspension of the rules.
Revolt moves.
Ware, in second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance 51-21.
Ware moves. Ware, in second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into a capital improvement community park recreation slash conservation project pass-through agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Natural Resources to provide the city with a $500,000 grant for North Canton Park upgrades, a project to develop recreation facilities at Maple Street Park, Bitzer Park, and the Dogwood Park, all more fully described in Exhibit A to the agreement, both attached here too and incorporated herein, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
All right, thank you. Chairman Foltz.
As it reads, Pat, Kathy, you want to make any comments?
Yes, this was just paperwork catching up with the process. We did receive the grant from the state of Ohio, and as part of that, we have to make sure that these grant agreement documents get returned to them, so we're at that stage where we need to get that done.
These are great projects for the city, or we saw them still underway and discussed, so I'm very excited. If you get half a million dollars, you can put it towards recreational amenities, that's a huge win for this community and great administration for their hard work in this, the state for their, their granddaughters.
And marry in line with the survey.
Yeah.
From benches to walkways to parks to, it makes sense.
I'll make a motion for, yes, first reading.
Ware, in seconds?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Motion.
Ware, in second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 51-21 under suspension.
Revolt motions.
Ware, in second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance 52-21?
Revolt moves. Story of seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into a performance agreement with AMC Land Company Limited for the construction of streets, stormwater management facilities, drainage improvements, and sewer improvements for the Monticello Phase 8 development, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you. Chairman Fonte.
It's basically Phase 8 of Monticello, and it's 539-909.65, and it's their commitment to make sure they conformed all the rules when they're putting in the utilities, streets, drains, sewer, so forth. And I move that we approve the first reading.
Story of seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So moves. Revolt, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 52-21 under suspension of the rules.
Revolt moves.
Story of seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to department reports. Deputy Director Freina.
I paid for this microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just give a quick update. Dogwood Park, everybody wants to know what's going on. Some say they don't see anything going on. Well, there is a lot. I'll tell you what is going on. Orchard Lot, the parking lot, the Mason Lot, the excavation's completed there. We are currently just waiting for catch basins to be made and then delivered. And then once the catch basins are put in place, then that's when the, you know, they can move in for the asphalt and concrete contractors. They have, the asphalt and concrete contractors have put the stakes in place. So that's what's done over there on the Orchard Lot. As far as in the Dogwood Park, the old bathroom facility that was there was demolished, so that's gone. There's nothing left there but a pad right now. They capped the old sanitary line off of Seventh. They ran a new water line off of, or I'm sorry, the old sanitary's off of Dogwood, and the new water line is off of Seventh. So some people saw some road closures there the past week and got that ready. The new precast restroom facility is in the process of fabrication and will be delivered to us, and the new pavilions, that's the new metal roofs and the new poles for the new two picnic pavilions, one on the Mason Lot, one inside the playground. Those are, and they're fabrication state and ready to start to ship. The playground equipment has arrived, and that is in storage. The fence that goes around the playground, that's also been ordered, and should be getting a shipping date on that. We've also had upgrade, we're doing upgrades to the electrical panel, and, you know, the biggest piece is just the moving of the dirt. Where we're at now is there are some regulatory compliance issues. Anytime you displace more than an acre, you have the EPA involved in Stark Soil and Water Conservation District specifically has to review something called a SWIP. It's an SWPPP. It's a stormwater pollution protection plan required by the EPA. We are displacing more than four acres in the Dogwood area. So that is something that your architectural firm has to put into the civil plans, and they're responsible for calculating not just the water volume, but also the water quality. So when you are displacing that much land and you're taking impervious, sorry, pervious surfaces and making them impervious surfaces, so you're taking grass and you're putting down concrete for a parking lot, and then also the part of this playground is turf, it does have underdrains, so it's still, and also considered an impervious surface. You have to account for in these civil drawings, where is all that water going? What volume of that water? And then also, how's that being treated? The quality of it. So that is up to the architectural firm, and they have to submit that to the county. County manager of that has to review it, send it back, calculations, go back and forth. We can't put a shovel in the ground until we get approval that we are allowed, that the SWIP has been approved. So that's where we are on that.
Catherine, I have a question to that.
Yeah.
Have they indicated how their, more specifically, the retention basin over on Orchard?
Mm-hmm.
Have they said how they're going to displace that at all?
Yes, there is a plan. And as far as that, the volume, we're okay there. You know, that's a huge retention basin, so it's not a lot of volume, but that can hold a lot. It's really been hung up on the quality, having to put in bio swales, vegetation swales, drawing those into the plan on how the water will kind of filter through that before getting into the retention basin.
Yeah, because I know Orchard.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking Dogwood. Over on Orchard side, Rob, you.
The reason I asked, the reason I asked is I saw there was, after that big rain, you had a lot of water.
Yeah, it did its job, didn't it?
I know we had to put a fence around there because it could have been.
What it did is because the Orchard parcel is actually under an acre that is owned by the Neeces. They let us do the work because they're creating a separate piece property, which it is. So we didn't have to do the stormwater pollution prevention plan, they actively started us to do it. So they gave us the building there, even though it's part of the overall park project. They let us start there. Why was it solved by working on the water quality and park quality?
All right, so I noticed that, like I said, there was a lot of standing water, and there was, it was there for a while.
Yes.
So to avoid, after heavy rains, having to put down a fence to keep young children out of it, what's our plan?
Well, what happens is after any kind of touchdown, there's a precast catch basin that will serve the tower structure for them, a small basin, kind of in the northeast corner of the Mason property. And that'll have, I'll let it be a storm, so it'll be middle of the structure. So when the catch basin is actually made and installed, they'll hide it from that into the side of the road or a big 24 thing, a tow story, it's close to the last. So they'll hide it, and it'll be like the whole lark works a little bit, so the pre developed, a lot of people opposed to that.
Okay.
So the whole, apparently, people get it done.
Okay, the reason I, right. Yeah, I got that. But the reason I asked, when I saw how, how much water was in there, my concern was if we go directly into the storm immediately, because we've had issues in that neighborhood for the longest time, and Dick Fano's, what's that, Hobby Shop, Hobby Shop would flood all the time, and all those businesses over on the, over in your ward, down over the hill. So you're confident that'll handle it?
Yeah, it'll handle it, and then also, it's the most vulnerable state right now.
Yeah.
The water just runs right off the park, so once we get the parking lot, sure, the rest of it will be grass and, 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 perfect.
Hey Kathy, how long will the SWIP approval take on the four acre piece? Because we can't put a shovel until it's approved, so is that a bureaucracy thing?
I check every day.
Okay.
To see where they are.
Is there any, anybody can call congressmen and women?
And they have their entire team working on it. Then they will send back their responses to the county's review, then the county will review it again. And if everything's correct, then we get the approval. If there's still amendments, they have to go back and fix those.
Very good. Thank you.
I just also wanted to mention, I'm part of the master plan committee, so we had our second committee meeting, steering committee being August 11th, and the next public meeting to put on everyone's calendar is August 31st. Right, Bill? August 31st, and that's going to be at Walsh in the Barrett Center, in the Barrett Center again. We had a public meeting once before and put the post-its up, and we're going to promote that again to get as many people to come to that last public meeting for the master plan. That's all.
Patrick?
Yes, regards to my report, the last two weeks have been knee-deep in budget. So I have a, I have a taskmaster. I have many taskmasters. And so I have one department to go, engineering, which will be this week. And then after I have a meeting with all the department heads and with my administrative team, put together preliminary budget, then that will go to, they will fine-tune that, we'll bring it back. Then we'll sit down with the mayor, we'll sit down then with finance director, come up with another version before city council sees it. And then Gina will probably report more on our timetable as to when we may first see that here. But I want you to know that we're trying to keep everything else going. That is a very time-consuming process, though. But it's, I think it ends up being a much better process for you that we can speak fairly intelligently about with any questions that you might have. We will be following the open gov format this year. You remember it from last year. So if there's any special requests, they should go to your finance director. If you're looking for paper copies of things, that would be appropriate. Otherwise, we'll be using our technology. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, President Jeff. I just want to welcome council back from our recess, and appreciate the comments that were made by the public tonight. And in regards to the zoning, our changes and reviewing, so I think that was a good meeting and presentation by us, but also listening to the, to the public. I want to compliment again our council clerk, Martin N. Gandhi, city administration and the council committee, who's been involved with this process of looking at rezoning and bringing our, our residents, our businesses up to date. And I know it's a, it's always a, what, a project in motion, I suppose. It's kind of a fluid situation at times, but I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into preparing that and presenting it. Catherine reminded us all about the master plan meeting, so that, again, is August 31st at the Barrett Center at Walsh University. Ben, again, and the council clerk, thank you again for the data that has been presented tonight. From my readings and government around, it seems like data is a good formula to follow that many of our decisions are governed by the data that comes in. So, and I think I'd like to remind people that, you know, this last year and a half has been quite a challenge for us, for our residents and for our businesses, but, you know, for council too and our city services. And with navigating the pandemic and still delivering the services that we have, and I understand the data that's come up there and some of the changes, but I'm still very hopeful and I'm very thankful that we've been able to deliver a good quality services to our citizens and residents. And I understand there's rooms for improvement in some of the areas there, but it's been a year and a half of challenges, and I think, I'm very grateful for what council's been doing and what our residents have done and our city services. I thought, I think we also heard tonight, maybe a little bit of a heads up, that it could be that, it might be a time where we need to look at the charter again. Because I think there's a couple of things that came up that we need to think about and plan for the future, and help us maybe take care of some issues now, but I won't get into the specifics, but there could be some things that we need to look at at the charter. And I think that falls on our responsibility to do that, to better serve our residents. And I think that falls on our responsibility to do that, to better serve our residents and businesses. And just don't really forget, school's in session. And so, and I'll let Rob talk about our street project that I think we've all been anxious to have replaced. But travel safely out there. If we can get that word out, school's in session. Watch our buses, watch the kids, you know, being picked up at their locations, being dropped off. And just remember, safety first, slow down. We're going to get through this. And I'll explain, I'll let Rob again explain why this road project started now. There's a good reason for it. Because some people look at it like, why is it starting right when school started? But there's good reason for it, and I learned it this year, so thank you very much. But welcome back, council. I know we'll have another week off, but we'll get back and, and good business tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Director Finance, Gina.
Thank you. I want to look at just a couple things on the July finance report. We don't need to pull up, I just wanted to ask. Is that better?
Are you on?
Sorry. So in the July finance report, it was noted on the monthly income tax receipts that we looked like we were up 8.4%. I got really excited. But to remember the cash flow, timing-wise, everything has changed in the last two years. So I reran it in August because August is truly July, and that was truly the deadline. And we're back to a 1.5%. So that's a little more realistic. I didn't want, if anybody else noticed that, I didn't want you to get too excited like we are, because at the same time, now that Mr. DiOrio is meeting with all of the department heads, in the finance department, we're projecting revenues. We started with the revenue projections that we did early in May. We also put together the tax budget, if you remember while you were off, that went to the county last week. So they're looking at those as far as valuations. This is the triennial update. So Allen Harold is galvanning around the county, presenting on the triennial update. And we're all going to see very large increases in valuation, and that's the market right now, right? So some of the other things that we're doing in finance is starting to calculate out personnel benefits. We'll have our insurance open enrollment coming up again. We're going to bid out the plan to see where the market is on that as well. So we're all kind of going to bring all the pieces together then. Timing-wise, we are looking at first reading of the budget for October 25th, second reading November 8th, and third reading November 22nd. So council, I'm sorry, the finance committee, which is, I know, committee of the whole, will see the budget on October 18th, and then we'll progress from there. Remember, it needs to be effective, like within 34 days of end of year, so that January 1st, it can all be settled.
So October 18th will be the first budget meeting?
That'll be the committee of the whole, finance, yes. Presentation will be on the 18th.
Okay. That's it?
That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, a couple of things. First, on our grant front, some more good news. I know last year, later on in the budget time, you challenged us to take a look at that Portage, especially Charlotte corridor. And in doing that, obviously, the school and the wonderful Debold expansion are coming. We've been working on a set of preliminary plans to get that on the go and get that moving forward, because we have to be ready. I mean, that traffic's coming, and we need to be ready two years from today. So with that, we're starting to build that funding pot with our preliminary plans that we have in hand. And found out last week that we received two grants already. We got $400,000 from ODOT's Jobs and Commerce in conjunction with our Stark County TID, which is Transportation Improvement District. There's like 52 such districts across Ohio, and we were able to secure $400,000 through that program. And then, secondly, they have a smaller program that ODOT's Jobs and Commerce has, and we secured their max, which is $150,000. So right out of the gate, two years ago, we've raised $550,000. Still got a lot more to go, including next meeting, we'll talk about a joint OPWC application with North Canton City Schools for a million and a half. But we've got to move ahead so we can take those monies, get that paid for, and then go into our neighborhoods or whatever else we need to do. And also, what we're looking at is basically resurrecting from your ward meeting, Member Foltz, five years ago, starting the project at West Term and I with the Roundabout. If the Portage Charlotte ship split there and extending with many lane additions through Main Street right to Orchard.
Thanks, Ryan.
Nice work.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember somebody that looked very similar to you that did that presentation.
Yeah, exactly.
Five years ago. It's happy it's coming full circle, and I know it eventually get to the city limits on the west side. So that's exciting.
Yeah, we're excited. And we'll have all the aesthetic treatments to go with our requests.
That's good work, Rob.
Yeah, thank you. A long way to go, but chipping away.
It's a good start.
Yeah. And then, secondly, as Mayor Wilder mentioned, you've probably noticed, we started today, on the first day of school, our North Main paving project from Seventh up to Orient. And when we put it out on social media last week, you know, the question came up, why would you start that? Good question. And the answer, actually, it's a quite easy answer, is that project had federal funds in it. Everything federal and even state funds, like how public works, they're all based on the fiscal year. And that was funded in fiscal year '22, which actually starts July 1st of 2021. So we didn't even have the monies available. That's, that's when Washington released them to Columbus. We just got our notice to proceed from ODOT on August 13th. And that was also the day, we awarded it long ago, but we had been sitting on our notice to proceed to the contractor. So our choices are, you know, get it in, and we have the polymer pavement, the thermoplastic pavement markings, all of those are temperature-sensitive. So our choices are, do we get it in with plenty of time, with the obvious inconvenience in the Seventh and 10th Street portions of the project? Or do we put it off and go, you know, do it next year, early summer, late spring, early summer, right when school's out? And the condition of that road to the north, I mean, we've been holding it together with crack seal, Gorilla Goo glue, duct tape, Flex Seal, every Flex Seal product they make. I mean, we've been holding it together. We just didn't want to hold it together for another winter. So that's the, the simple reason.
Hey, Rob, it said 30-day project, but the way you're going today, it looks like you're going to get it done in like two weeks.
Two would be aggressive, but yeah, we hope to get the rest of it south of Apple Grove milled by tomorrow. And then Wednesday, Thursday, mill the three inches north of Apple Grove. And then start paving the southern half from Seventh to Apple Grove Friday. And that would just be the intermediate, which is three-quarter inches shy to allow for your...
Yeah, I mean, I've been up and down there five times today, and I thought the travel was decent.
Yeah, I went through, I specifically went through at 3:00, when the school PM rush was there. And it cost me a couple cycles, so maybe three or four minutes, I was delayed. And that'll be the worst day when we're working, it's between Seventh and 10th. We went from Seventh to 11th.
That's your plan here, isn't it?
If the weather holds, that's the plan. Get the base coat on the southern half Friday, yes. Now, we'll have a lot more to do north of Apple Grove next week with that, where that failed joint is. We got three or four days to get that out.
So this will all be wrapped up late September?
Weather holds up, I would certainly hope. I'm thinking even maybe three and a half weeks from today.
That's a little...
I think you could do it in three.
It's up to the weatherman.
Yeah, this week, though, it's humid with no rain.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Member Foltz. How about Martin?
I know I've talked too much, but I do have one more quick thing.
I was really hoping you were done.
We got official notice from the Stark County Board of Elections today that both of our ballot issues will appear on the ballot. They are issues number two and three. And that is all.
Thank you. All right, now, Member Foltz.
Mayor, thanks. Ben, once again, great job on the survey and then also working on these reclassification zoning. Jeff, great meeting. This is government that's finest, and the public showed up. We took the time to make sure that they got on the record, addressed concerns, so I'm just very pleased. That's the way government should work. And I think, you know, we can continue that with the new council coming up, I'm sure you will. But that was exciting to me, just to see some of the old neighbors that had concerns, and let's get them addressed and put on paper if we can. Exciting about the parks, obviously, with the grant, and really, what we showed, that $500,000 we had to put in of our money, and we just made, we just showed that we have grant dollars coming in for Charlotte. So, I mean, here again, you know, sometimes you have to put money into projects. If you put 25% of a $2 million project, you're going to find other grant dollars somewhere else. Engineering just showed that, so that's, that's a good sign. I just want to thank the administration for working harder. Rob, I've called you. Martin, we've worked on some neighborhood issues with some landscaping, and I think that's moving forward. I've heard from some of the residents, and Rob, I will get back to that, some catch basin work, some gutters that we'll continue to improve for our residents. So thanks, thanks, everybody, for your work.
Thank you. Member Ware?
Doug really said a good job with it. And Jeff, you did, you did a really nice meeting tonight and really made sure the public's heard and asking again and again, does anyone have anything to say? And I think that's an important part of the process tonight. So thank you for doing that, and Ben, thanks for just bringing it up. I mean, some of that to think about, you know, along the railroad, and it's been like that for so many years, and for you taking it upon that, it's just nice to have everything up to date. And like Doug said, I always get quick responses from really everybody on the team, I mean, immediately. And that isn't common. I mean, we all work in different industries, and that's, it's short-sighted for people these days to get back to you in time, and this group does that all the time. So thank you. And Gina, you and I will be talking soon. I said I was really busy up until now, and I can, I have some time now, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Member Fonte?
I just wanted to say it was a great evening, all the good input. One of the things that I just resonates with me is the Dora, because I worked the beer truck from 7:00 to 10:00 the night of the festival. And I got to tell you, the only negative comment I got was, why do we have to, why can't we reuse our cups? Because they want to recycle, they don't want to waste cups. And I said, well, that's how they keep track of what you're doing. So we just probably have to get the messaging out that we recycle. But, but everybody, overall, it was a home run. And I just saw so many smiles and people acting right and being nice and respectful. I would say we're on the right track. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Member Revolt?
No report.
Member Sareta?
Yeah, a couple of things. Thank you to all those people that put on Main Street Festival. There were a lot of people involved, and they did, kudos all of them, did a fabulous job. Weather was, God was good with us on that, too. Ben, on the survey thing, you know, the numbers were the highest ever because of you. There's no doubt about it. I see you running around in Main Street, how many times, with all these things, trying to get so, kudos to you on that. But the next thing is, what do we do with those numbers? You know? I would assume we'll put a committee together, we'll go deep into that and find out, you know, what is it that we need to move forward on, you know, to get the numbers even better? Because you remember, the enemy of great is good. So do we want to be fair or good? I don't think any of us do. So let's take a look at those. We probably need to dive into those, and what is our plan moving forward? Not just what, you know, these are really neat things. And I think we failed in the past on that in some ways. So this, we shouldn't, this year, we have it all right here in front of us. So I'm sure we'll, we'll jump on that kind of thing. Outside of that, Rob, thank you for that. I've had a lot of people ask me about the school thing. Good, good answer on that. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Member Straya?
Thanks for everybody, everybody that spoke. I'm not going to go, that's probably the most people I think I've ever seen speak in any of these meetings in my short time. But that was a very good, very good communication back and forth. I enjoyed that. School's back in session, so please, hey, I already have seen people blowing by bus stops and, you know, so please watch out for the school crossings and bus stops. The Main Street Festival was absolutely fantastic, by far the best I've seen. Christina, you did a great job organizing and all the people, and yes, everybody. The only, the only complaint that I heard was traffic, and if that's our biggest complaint, that's, that's, yeah, I'm okay with that. Ben, thanks for your work on the, the survey, all the Saturdays, all the meetings that we had. You did a great job. I appreciate that. Gina, love the report, as usual. 1.5% I will take any day, especially last year.
Yeah.
And support local business, that's all we got.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Before final call for new business, Marty, do you have any comment based on our public hearing today regarding zoning? Any last words?
I, not in regards to the public hearing. I do have a couple of updates, if I may share, in regards to the department. And kind of exciting that, you know, in anticipation of the EPA mitigation completion, the contractor for Debold has submitted the revised plans to address the first round of plan review comments. The mitigation has drawn that out a little bit further than we'd hoped, but nonetheless, we are moving forward and hopefully, you know, be able to issue some type of an approval so construction can continue. We've also been working with the school district to issue permits for construction fencing for the two school sites, Charlotte and Clermont. And that's in preparation of the early site work development. So we should be seeing some work moving forward there, so that's exciting as well. We do have a couple items on the agenda for the zoning board of appeals tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. And it's also looking like we will have an agenda for our September planning commission meeting. And that concludes my report.
Hey, hey, Marty, on Debold's, when do they plan on actually constructing? What's their target for that?
The completion date?
Or just to get the construction, like the building out of the ground? When are they supposed to start that project?
Well, soon. Oh, go ahead.
I think the, the best way, you know, to answer that is that they're still working with some regulatory agencies to get final approval. I spoke, and the mayor and I spoke with that agency Friday. And so we think that there shouldn't be really too much reason that they can't come back to the building department to seek a permit to start putting in the footers, the foundation, probably in the next couple of weeks. And then there, the, the structural steel has been delivered to the site.
Wow.
So that will be starting shortly thereafter.
I saw they had a sign out looking for interviews, for hiring. What do you anticipate?
Well, I think this is, what they're looking for now is to augment the force that they have there. This really wouldn't be, as relates to the relocation of jobs from their corporate headquarters. So this, as you know, there's just hiring everywhere. Everybody is hiring everybody, so.